All set.
Okay, all right, I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is a meeting of the Whitman zoning board of appeals for Monday, March 29th. This meeting is being recorded. First case is case number five for 2021. Let me first sort of take a roll call here. Mr. Andrews.
Yes.
Mr. Keeman.
Here.
Mr. Kachetari.
Yeah.
Mr. Blaws.
Here.
Mr. Gilmetti.
Here.
And I'm John Goldrosen, so I note that James Chandler is not present. And we also have Mr. Covering the building inspector, Cal O'Brien, our secretary and assistant, and we have Mrs. Sokolowski, who's the applicant, and Lauren Hogan, who is an abutter at this point. So this is case number five, location of property, 611 Plymouth Street, type of district, residence A2, type of structure, existing dwelling, proposed to family, owner's name, Wojciech Sokolowski, owner's address, 8 Wild Turkey Lane in Whitman. When did you acquire this property? August 2020? It's application filed with town clerk. Yes, has any previous appeal been made? No. Section of bylaw which relief is requested variance from section 5, 5-4A8. Reason for asking relief? Existing dwelling was constructed in 1955 with little updating from that time. Applicant would like to expand dwelling in size and add second floor. In so doing, there would be ample room for second unit. Applicant is in process of obtaining additional land from the town that above Green Acres Drive. This case was advertised in the Whitman Hansen Express on March 11th and March 18th. And sitting on the case will be Mr. Blaws, Mr. Andrews, Mr. Gilmetti, Mr. Kachetari, and myself, John Goldrosen. At this time, we'll have the reading of the list of abutters. Do you have it, Mr. Blaws?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The following is a list of parties and interests in accordance with the requirements of the State Zoning Act for the property located at 611 Plymouth Street, Book 53324, page 263. Town of Whitman, Darlene Timmons and Greg Foley, Linda Kaplan, Michael Taylor, Logan Hogan, Catherine and Jelissa Diaz, Mark and Mary Holbrook. That's all.
Thank you. So the procedure will follow. We'll have the applicant present the case, explain what they want to do. Well, I have a couple of letters from town boards to read into the records. We'll have questions from members of the board, and then we'll ask for comments and questions from members of the public. And I am now going to try to put up the the plan that the applicant submitted. So give me a second. Let me see if I can do that successfully. All right, and now let's see if I can turn it. Okay, so members of the board should have a copy of the plan, but I put one up on the board and Mr. Sokolowski, if you can explain what you want to do, I can kind of, can everybody see the plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you make it bigger?
Uh, yeah, let me, boy, you want to, you want to test all my abilities. Let's see, here we are. Let's see if this all, here we go. So I'm going to, so I'm going to kind of try to zoom in on the property a little bit here. And
Beautiful.
There we go. All right, everybody, okay with that? All right, Mr. Sokolowski, why don't you explain what you want to do?
My proposed idea is adding a addition to the back of the building, existing building.
Right.
And also adding a second story structure to the existing and to the addition as well. And right now I'm showing, you know, driveway, existing driveway, and propose parking in the back prior, prior to purchase that for the meeting in the May, I believe, to obtain the other portion of the property.
I'm sorry, I just missed what you said about a meeting.
Well, I guess it's going to be another town meeting to obtain, obtain the, that strip of lane on the Green Acres Drive. Yes.
Okay, is it on, is it going to be on the agenda for the?
Yes, yes.
And?
Yes, I submitted a request for it to be on the agenda.
Did, but do you have a purchase and sale agreement with the town or?
No, no, not yet.
All right.
Not yet.
But, but go ahead and I'll ask some questions and that.
My understanding is that there's going to be a meeting in the May. So what I'm trying to do, see if I can get the permission to do the addition, who else obtained two family dwelling before I acquire that piece of property.
All right. What, describe what the, I mean, I've driven by it, but describe what the size of the existing house is and if you build this addition, what the, you know, how many, how many rooms, bedrooms, et cetera, will be in one unit, how much in the other unit?
It's right now, it's like close to 1100 square feet. So I'm, I'll try to build it about, about 1100 square feet per unit. And it's going to be three bedrooms, one bathroom, kitchen, living room. Um, on each floor. So basically upstairs, same thing is three bedroom, one bathroom, laundry room, kitchen, you know?
Okay. All right, so it'll be two-story and essentially each of the units will occupy one of the stories?
Yes.
Okay, and where will the entrances be for?
Um, I get, there's going to be two entrances in the front of the building from Plymouth Street.
Okay.
Uh, so basically side by side with the existing door, it's going to be another door.
Okay.
Entrance to second floor. And then it's two exits going to be in the back of it from the, from the driveway as well.
Again, one, one, so that from the driveway, people from the first floor popping can get in and?
They probably set, set upstairs to get up.
Okay. All right, what, what is your purpose in buying the land from, from the town?
Ultimate goal, if, if town of Whitman will allow me to purchase that property, so I want to move the driveway from the Green Acres for the, for the safety reason, because it's having drivers coming off to Plymouth Street. It's, it's almost like right on the intersection, the, the rotary.
Right.
On the Plymouth, so when you exited that driveway, pretty much you just get, you know, it's like, you know, it's a, it's not easy to get out from that, that side.
Right.
So, so the ultimate goal would be, you know, doing the driveway from the side of it, of the Green Acres.
Right, you have a driver. Okay. So I mean, I guess, yes, that's, so that's the primary reason. It's not a matter increasing the size of a lot, it's more to have access to Green Acres.
Yeah, for, for safety reason.
Okay.
You know.
So, you know, before going to members of the board and reading the letters, you know, just make a couple of observations of my own. And, you know, I did go by the property and I agree, it certainly could, could use some upgrading. But I think we, if, if you already, I know you, you said you wanted to sort of get the permission from the board and then you'd go and get the town's approval to purchase the land, so I think our problem is that we don't, I at least don't feel we can give permission until you have an interest in the land, although we, we could look at this project without really paying attention to the land on Green Acres Drive and just consider it on its own. But where you don't own the town's land and you don't, if you had a purchase and sale agreement, so that, you know, had, you had a guaranteed right to add the land, that'd be one thing, but I'd say at this point, we have, sort of have to look at it just by itself without the land on Green Acres. So that, you know, that's one observation I make. The other one is that even, then right now, so you've got 12,000 foot, well, yeah, the plan says 12,014 square feet is the size of the existing lot. I did look up the the town's portion is something like 37, let me see, just so people know, it's 3,564 feet. So if you put them together, it'd be 15,578 feet if you get the town land. But either way, it's, so you need a variance to have a two-family here because it's under, I think you need 22,000.
At eight. Section eight is 22,000.
Yeah, 22,000, so it's, it's below that. And you know, it's, I have to see what other members of the board feel, but I, it's hard to see what the hardship is that justifies a variance. You certainly could expand or even totally demolish and rebuild the single-family house that's there. And you'd still need a permission from the board because it's substandard inside, the lot is substandard inside, but all you need at that point is a determination, which is a much lower standard for us to consider. I mean, this kind of reminds me of, the board may remember, there's the property at the corner of Park Ave and Court Street that we approved, tear down and rebuild on a few months ago. It was a small lot, an old house, and we approved it. They put up a very nice two-story house and it just sold for $545,000, so you know, it was certainly an improvement to the neighborhood and it was a substandard lot, but it, the house they built fit well in there. So I'm just kind of throwing that out, that that's another option you have as opposed to, to a two-family. So anything else you want to add before I read letters and ask for other members of the board to make comments?
Um, no, I don't.
Okay. If?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
It's Bob Curran, Bob Curran here. I don't necessarily agree that it should be section A8. I think it should be A7. A8 is meant for a lot on its own to build a two-family. And A7 is talking about conversion of existing single-family, and it doesn't say you can't add additions, but the square footage of the lot is reduced to 18,000.
Yeah.
It still requires a variance.
Would still require variance. I, and I, I looked at A7, but to me that, I read that as being more converting an existing single-family house into two families and may, you know, maybe you put a porch or something, but this is really doubling the size of the house, so I, I know, I, I think A8 is the provision that applies here myself. Either way, either way, we need a variance.
Right.
Okay, if the members are okay, I'm, I'm going to close the picture of the plan so we can kind of see each other as we talk. Does everybody, does anybody need to have the, and I can always put the plan back up there if we need to, but I just feel like you may rather be seeing people rather than looking at the plan. Is that okay with everyone?
Yes. I have my coffee.
Okay, all right, I'm going to close that. Okay. Let me, let me read. I, I have a couple of letters from town boards. Let me read those into the record and then we'll have questions from from members of the board. From the Board of Health, the Whitman Board of Health has no objection to the petition, petition of Wojciech Sokolowski for variance to add a second story for a second unit to the existing single-story building at 611 Plymouth Street. As the DPW billing records indicate, this building is connected to municipal sewer and water. Sincerely, Mary Kelly, clerk. And from the planning board, at the February 23rd, 2021 meeting, the board reviewed the plan for 611 Plymouth Street. The planning board recommends denial until such time that the applicant obtains the proposed land that is owned by the town of Whitman. Sincerely, Adam Somerville, Chair. Mrs. Sokolowski and actually Bob Curran as well, I, I pointed out another thing, that if, if you, the, you purchase the land from Whitman, that would make this a corn lot and now be subject to setback requirements. It's, I took kind of eyeballed the plan. It, you know, it's Mrs. Sokolowski, at that point, you would be considered to have two front yards, one on Plymouth Street, one on Green Acres. And you have to then meet the setback requirements for a front, for a front setback. It looks close as to whether it would be 30 feet from Green Acres Drive. Right, but it's not measured off in the plan, so I can't really, can't really tell, but I just raised that as a, another issue.
I mean, the exist, existing building, it's already where the property line is supposed to be anyway. Like, uh, on the, on the drawing, where it's, it's already beyond, so I'm not, that would be already existing building, which you're talking about the furnace.
Yeah, you know, it's, right now with the lot you have, you meet the front setback requirement from Plymouth Street. But if you add to it the property, if you can get the property from Whitman, now you have frontage on Green Acres Drive and under the zoning bylaw, you now have to meet front setback requirements on Green Acres Drive. And you might, it, it looks close to me. It's not, the engineer didn't measure that off obviously because it wasn't part of the law. But I just throw that out as another potential issue and I don't know, maybe if, if the board's inclined to approve it, then maybe we sort of add a, but again, you don't own the property, so it's a little hard to judge.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Okay, let me go out to members of the board for their questions and comments. Mr., Mr. Kachetari?
Does he own the house next door with a sheer driveway?
No, you, you don't own the property.
No, no, no.
All right. I, I'm in the mind to wait if to purchase the land or not.
All right. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Mr., Mr. Keeman, even though you're sitting on the case, do you have any comments or questions?
I have no questions at this time.
Okay, Mr. Blaws?
Yeah, a couple, a couple of questions. One of, I took a ride down Green Acres Drive today. Part of what, just for the applicant, part of what we do is we, we, we have to weigh the impact of any project on the neighborhood. And will this fit with the rest of the neighborhood? So you're, you're, you're talking about, or you're requesting going from a single family to a, to a multifamily, to a two-family. So what I wanted to see was whether there were any, any multifamilies on Green Acres Drive. So I rode all the way down to the end and there's not a single house on Green Acres Drive that's not a single-family home. So right off the bat, I say, a project, a two-family on Green Acres Drive doesn't fit with the neighborhood. But a single-family does, which, which the existing property is. So I've got a concern about any driveway put on Green Acres Drive. Right off the bat, doesn't matter whether you buy the land from the town or not. I wouldn't want to see a multifamily on Green Acres Drive when it doesn't exist. That may affect property values for everybody on Green Acres Drive. So the, as far as the, as, as, as far as the, the, the square footage, it, it is, it was purchased as a single-family home, knowing that you needed 22,000 for a multifamily, so to me, it, the property's too small, even with the, the purchasing of the land from the town. It's too small to turn it into a two-family because that in effect is a self-imposed hardship. So I, but I mean, those, those are comments, they're not questions of the applicant. But those are, those are my thoughts on the, the, the request and the, the project. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Andrews?
Well, the only comment I have is we're in a two district, he also needs a special permit for that.
Right, to have the two families, you would need the special permit as well as the variance.
As well as the variance, right, and of course the variance cannot be predicated on ownership of the property.
Right.
I mean, he, you know, it, it, it can't be because he can't be forced to buy that property to do this. It would have to depend on other reasons for denying something like that.
Mr. Andrews, I'm not following what, what your point is about buying, you mean the town, the town parcel?
On, on, on page 41 of the zoning bylaw, under sect, under G, section three, it says, you can, we can put limitations booked on time review, including the existence, including the continued existence of a particular structure, but excluding any conditions safeguard the limitation based upon the continued ownership. Well, he doesn't own it at the present, but my interpretation is that he, we cannot force him to buy that in order to approve.
Right, he, he owns?
He doesn't, he doesn't own that strip of land now.
Yeah, right, right.
We can't force him to buy it in order to approve this. We have to make it on the merits of it without him owning that.
Right.
Honestly, either way, I want to buy a property, the town will sell it to me.
Right, but I'm saying we can't make it a condition that you have to buy that property.
Yeah.
We, we have to make a decision on, you're not presently owning it now.
Yes, yes.
Right. But all, other than that, I just wanted to remind the board that we need to issue a special permit for that also.
Thank you.
Okay, John, hi, I'm sitting here, my husband, and you'd like to speak?
Yeah, after I have the members of the board speak, I will call.
Okay, I apologize.
No, no, no problem. Okay, Mr. Gilmetti, any comments?
Uh, Mr., can you hear me, John?
Yes.
Yeah, Mr. Sokolowski, who takes care of that land now?
Me.
Does the town take care of it?
Oh, did you mean the, owned by town?
Do they mow the lawn or do they?
Um.
You should know, you live next door.
I haven't seen anybody. I only owned it from August, so.
It's just a vacant piece that's just left
Pretty much.
To grow in the wild?
Yes.
Yeah. Mr. Sokolowski, you, I mean, you're not, you're not living in the house in Plymouth Street, right?
No, not right now, no.
Yeah, you live on Wild Turkey Lane.
Yes.
Okay, the lot next door, John, does not have any dimensions on it, but that's, a lot of times as a builder, we take a lot like that and we run an easement. I don't know if there's any easements there, but Cal could have picked them up anyway. But can he, if he doesn't get the town to sell him the land, can he get an?
Couldn't get an easement? Well, you have to buy, buy an easement from the town.
He can do that. Now we'd give him the driveway.
Yeah.
But on any other lot in town, this is a question for Bobby, on the other, any other lot in town, would a two-family be okay on the lot, the way it is right now?
No, it would require a variance and a special.
It wouldn't fly?
No.
Okay. Okay.
I got a question. How many multifamilies on Plymouth Street?
Well, there's got to be a few.
Yeah, I'm sure there are a few.
Because this house is on Plymouth Street, so if he bought the land, you, you know, then he gets something to work with. If, if the address was on Green Acres, then, yeah, you could say the neighborhood's a little different, but if he's on Plymouth Street, he's got a right to put a two-family if he can, if the land's big enough and it can work with it.
But, but, but Mr. Kachetari, that's the issue, and it's not.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so if he, if he comes back with the land, I'd love to, you know, to redo, go through this all over again.
He, he'd still be under, he'd still be below the amount needed for the land for A2, for the, with, if he gets the town land, he's got about 15,000 square feet, so he's still below the 18,000. So he would still need a variance.
A variance, yeah, but so, I think it's, it's doable.
Yeah. But we could
Plymouth Street.
Decision that's
Plymouth Street, right.
Premised on that.
You're right. All right, John, I'm all set.
Okay, I'm going to go out to members of the public then, so Ms. Hogan.
Hi, I'm right here.
Yeah, yeah, would you like to give us your, your comments? Go ahead. Bailey, is that, is that Mr. Hogan or who's speaking?
Yes, it's my husband.
Okay, yeah, we, we can hear you fine, Ms. Hogan, we can't hear him so well, but if you can get closer to, and we can't see you, just, but that's okay, as long as you can see us.
It's still working, so I'm trying to do this through a cell phone.
Oh, okay, yeah, go ahead, we can, we can make it up.
Yeah, so I, I think I'm with the gentleman that was speaking earlier. I mean, I'm okay. You know, we, we did look at that property and we were just going to make it, it's a really level of a house and just make it into more, more land, but I'm okay if you put a two-family, I mean, not two-family, a two, a two-story on the building for, you know, to
Another level.
But, you know, the fact that there's no two families around there, the fact that we just, you know, purchased the house and we moved up there and trying to get away from the city, it's, um, I don't know, I'm, I'm not, I'm not in favor of a, of a two-family and I'm okay with a two-story. I'm just not in favor of the two-family.
Mr. Hogan, is your property a single-family or a multifamily?
Single.
Single-family, thank you. And you're the director of butter?
Um, the director of butter on Plymouth Street, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay. We have a couple, let me just, we've got a couple of the people in the waiting room and I'm just going to bring them in just to make sure they're not, they're probably here for the next case, but I want to bring them in just to make sure, so give me a minute here. Uh, Mr. Parker, if you can hear us, and if you can unmute yourself, which, which, which case are you here for, which property are you here this to speak about? You're, you're muted, Mr. Parker. All right, well, he may have walked away. And then there's one here, Pixel 3XL, you're also muted. Can you hear me? And if so?
John, that might be my cellphone and
Oh.
I'll, I'll, I'll just turn the phone off.
Okay, thank you.
See if it goes off, see if it, if it disappears when I turn my phone off. Otherwise, it's somebody else.
All right, and I don't see Mr. Parker on the list of abutters, so he might be here for the next case, so I'm going to assume we can proceed. So Mr. Sokolowski, to, to be approved, to get, to get the, no, let's see, we're seeing, who is this that's?
Hello?
Yes, hi, what is your name?
Jose Faraz.
Jose Faraz, I'm for case, okay.
Okay, all right, just hold on, uh, we're finishing up the previous case.
All right, great.
Thank you. So, Mr. Sokolowski, in order to be approved, to get a variance for the two-family, you would need four out of the five votes in favor. And, uh, I mean, I can kind of take a poll of the board and, and see, uh, I have to say I'm not in favor based on what I said initially, I think you'd be fine to upgrade the single-family house, whether you put a second story on what's there, or tear it down and put up something else in its place. Uh, I, I'd be fine with that, but I, other members of the board, just sort of as a quick, quick read here, Mr. Blas?
On, I mean.
John? Yeah.
Yeah, um, John, I, I'd like to question that, uh, butter, that the woman that just spoke, is that lot left a blight? Lot, in other words, nobody takes care of it, it's just rubbish on it, does the grass just grow up about three feet? I mean, uh,
The, the lot on, the Whitman owns?
The, uh, the lot, the one, the one they buying from the town.
Yeah, that's.
Takes care of it, and is, does it, it just sit, sits there and it's, um?
Well, I mean, I drove by it, Fred, I mean, it wasn't, it wasn't overgrown, it wasn't gorgeous either.
It looks like it's part of the property, like, it looks like.
There is a fence.
Six eleven.
There is a fence, um, between the property that Mr. Sokolowski owns and the strip that the town, the town has.
I know, I should have been, I should have looked at it, but I didn't look at it.
No, it's okay. Yeah, I looked, you know, it's like when they built Green Acres Drive, and they built up the subdivision, I looked, I did look up the subdivision plan for Green Acres Drive, and that was a, uh, like an unnumbered lot that was never intended to be built on, and how the town, how it wound up in the town, I think the town took it for non-payment of taxes by the developer, that's what it looked like, but,
Yeah.
Uh, you know, it wasn't, it just wasn't put with anybody else's lot, it was left alone, so.
Okay, all right, I just, I didn't know what that, you know, if that was a lot that was just, uh, nobody took care of it, there's beer cans all over the place and whatever, who knows?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm all set.
So, let me just kind of poll the members of the board, uh, as to whether they'd be willing to approve this as a two-family, whether it's taken a formal vote, so I can give Mr. Sokolowski some guidance, Mr. Blas?
Um, um, thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, I would, um, not, not look favorably upon the twelve thousand square foot, but if he was able to secure the extra thirty-five hundred square foot, I would be, um, I would be okay to, um, to grant the variance and special permit so long as we could put a condition that there be no driveway on Green Acres Drive, and there be a fence put up on the southerly side of the, um, uh, where, uh, the, the fence be brought back closer to Green Acres Drive and, and replaced, so that that lot stays on Plymouth Street and not on Green Acres Drive.
Right, so, so that would kind of defeat the purpose, though, of him buying the parcel.
Well.
And it would make.
Yeah, you buy the parcel to get enough land to be able to build on.
It still would be, wouldn't be enough, he still would need a variance.
He would still need a variance, he'd still be seven thousand square feet, too small.
But, but you'd be okay with it, all right. Uh, Ms. Andrews?
Well, if I remember correctly, if you're looking, if you're standing and looking down Green Acres Drive, all of the homes on that street are single-family, and headed southerly on both sides of Plymouth Street, the first few houses are all single-family. To get multi-story family, a multi-family home, you've got to go up and go around the other direction, a couple of houses.
Yeah.
Though I think that, that might be a detriment to the, you know, the immediate neighborhood to make it into a two-family. I think it would go better as, as a, you know, if you wanted to put a second story on it, but have it as a single-family home.
Right. Um, Mr. Gilmetti, what, what's your feelings?
Yeah, I'm looking at the, the plan, that piece of land might have been left there as a buffer. I don't know, but, uh, it looks like the house is on Plymouth Street to me.
It is.
So, I mean, uh, I would be forward if he got, if he got the piece of land. Because this is probably putting a cart before the horse.
And Mr. K.
Let's start meeting, John. I should know this.
I don't know, I don't, no, you shouldn't know it, because I don't know if they've said it yet. Yeah. Mr. Katchaturi, what, what's your feelings?
Uh, I would, I would make this a two-family, and I'd give him variance on it. I mean, I don't see any difference if you make a two-story building, and it's two, there's two doors in front of the building, it's still the same-sized building, and he's on Plymouth Street. And he got a, he does have enough room to put a driveway on the northern side of the house, go along uh, Green Acres and park in the back, and to give him sufficient room to have a turnaround, so he can drive out onto Plymouth Street instead of backing out. The, the, I don't know what happened there with the driveways the way that is, that's just horrible.
That, that split between.
That's horrible, that's horrible, I don't know if the town even allowed anything like that to happen.
Well.
Steven, what if you put driveway on the radius, can you put the driveway on the radius?
Well, you got the room there, you go along the house, and you got the room to put the driveway there, you got a lot more room on, on the, on the northern side and the southern side, but he has to be a long driveway into the parking lot in the back, but that's doable.
But that's, I mean, I, I, e- either way, I mean, it certainly would be an improvement if.
Absolutely.
But whether it's one, one family or two, Mr. Sokolowski.
I drive by there at least two, three times a day.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's, I always thought it was a sore, sore sight.
Yes. I mean, certainly would help to put, whether it's one family or two family, to put parking behind the house, so you can turn around and drive, drive out onto Plymouth Street.
And again, John.
But I agree, that's a tough, that's gotta be.
None of the floors in the second unit, there's no difference.
Yeah.
Other than the second door.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I mean, I, it's gotta be tough with the, uh, fence between the two driveways, just the visibility of that exit from there.
Yeah, you're gonna kill somebody.
Yeah. Uh, so, anyway, this, this is Sokolowski, so, I mean, I think hearing, you know, different things, but, uh, at, at a minimum, I think you would, Mr. Blas, for instance, would be, I'd, I think Mr. Katchaturi would be for it for a two-family. Uh, Mr. Blas would be, but you need to get the land from the town first, and I don't think we could, we can vote in this when you don't have, we don't know if you're gonna get the land from the town. Um, I'm not even sure what the procedure is, whether it's just the town meeting article, or whether it has to go out to bid, I don't know what the procedure would be, so.
But I would also add the conditions, too. With the no driveway on, on Green Acres Drive.
With no driveway on Green Acres Drive, so, uh, that, that's where, this is Sokolowski, um, and I, I don't want to take a vote, you know, if I put into a vote tonight with the rock, yes it is, you're, you're not gonna get the four votes in favor, so I don't want to do that, because then it complicates things if you want to come back with a different idea, or if you come back later with, uh, you know, having to quiet the town.
So, okay, so.
Go ahead.
Best way would be just for me to wait in the May to purchase the property and then come back.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you got the, it's a town agreed to sell it to you, and you had a purchase and sale, and you had the purchase and sale written in a way that you didn't have to actually buy the land, unless this board approved, you know, what you wanted to do with it, that, I, I would say as a board, we can, that's fine for us, as long as you've got the right to buy the land, and I could understand, you may not, I, you may want to buy the land either way, but if, if you didn't want to buy the land from the town, uh, you could wait till after you get our approval, but, um, you know, we do that all the time, developers come in with a proposal to put some building up on property, and what they have is a purchase and sale agreement, if they don't, because they don't want to buy the land unless they're gonna get their permit, so we're okay if you had a purchase and sale, but not just right now, we're just looking to maybe.
I mean, even, even if, even if I could put a driver from opposite side out, that would give me an, you know, more safety, you know, access in and out from the property, because right now, way that it is, uh, not a good thing.
If, if the, uh, okay, yeah.
John?
Yeah.
John?
Yes, Mr. Gilmetti.
Is Michelle, is Michelle still the town council? Michelle Alaya?
Yeah. Is she? Bob?
Yes, she is.
She is.
And Peter Summers, too.
She's on this case?
No, Mich- Michelle is town, is a member of town council, but she's not aware of this case.
Oh, wow.
No, and I'm not sure that there is any, um, plans for the town to sell that property. My feeling is it would probably go up for auction.
Oh, okay. All right. I didn't know if she would, it was, uh, how far along it was.
Yeah, a- and I haven't heard anything other than, um, it did get mentioned to me by somebody outside of town hall. So I am not aware of anything to do with sale of this property.
But they do advise the town on.
Yeah, I would suggest that the applicant just withdraw without prejudice and then come back if he does acquire the land.
Yeah, I'd go for that.
Yeah, yeah, and we'd be okay with that, Mr. Sokolowski, and that's, that's better than us taking a vote and turning you down, because then you have to get your approval of a planning board to come back, you, you're blocked from coming back in two years without jumping through some hoops. I, I'd rather do that, see what happens with your, with the town, uh, I'd ask you to at least think through whether, uh, you know, just turning it into a lodge or a single-family would work for you, um, you know, for your expectations, that, you know, better, better parking area for, for the property, it's only, you know, I certainly think the property deserves some improvement, it's, uh, it's not a great-looking house, uh, for lots kind of run down and back, and I'd love to see you do something to fix it up one way or the other. So, so, I, do, are you asking us to allow you to withdraw without prejudice?
Yes, yes, please.
All right, so then, and so, Ms. Hogan and Mr. Hogan, so you know, uh, if Mr. Sokolowski comes back here, he's going to have to reapply, we have to re-advertise for a new hearing, you know, the abutters will get notice and so forth, so that's what would be the procedure. All right, yeah, and has requested leave to withdraw without prejudice?
I'll make a motion to that.
All right, is there a second?
Second, John.
Second, let me take a roll call vote, uh, Mr. Katchaturi?
Yes.
Mr. Blas?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Gilmetti?
Yes.
And myself, John Goldrosen, yes. So, uh, it's five oh, you're allowed to withdraw without prejudice, and you can bring back a, a new plan at a different time, Mr. Sokolowski.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, yes, Mr. Hogan.
Now, I have a question, if that section goes up for auction, what paper would that go in, and would they notify us?
I, I don't have the answer to that, I don't.
Usually in the paper, be in the paper, John.
Yeah, I, I don't know that you'd get a notification, it's not, um, I simply don't know, you'd have to check, have to check with the town administrator and see what the procedure is, but I, I did raise that, Mr. Sokolowski, because I'm not, uh, I, I I don't have full understanding of the public bidding laws, but I think there's more to it, that the, the town meeting might agree to allow the land to be sold, but then I think, the town might be required under state law to put it up for bid, rather than just, you know, reach a deal within the butter. So I just raised that as an issue for you, uh, there's a whole other complication to this thing, so, all right? Okay, with that, I'm gonna, uh, close this hearing, and thank, thank you all for participating.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I see another person, let me, uh, move another person to, into here. Okay, I'm now gonna proceed to the, the next case, and, uh, Ms. Hughes, I, I, I can hear, I think you can hear me, so you're.
Yes, I, I, for some reason, I, I can see everybody, but I can't get my audio to work, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you loud and clear, okay.
All right, great.
And you're two seventy, Washington Harris, we'll get to that after, we, we have one more case to do before we get to you, so you can just.
Okay, so, uh, I was told seven forty-five, so do I, when should I come back on?
It's certainly gonna be eight o'clock, so, uh, or you can stay on, just mute yourself and.
Okay.
Go take a walk.
All right, thank you.
Okay, we can.
All right, thank you.
At this point, by the way, just so you know.
Oh, okay, great.
Okay, all right, so we have, uh, let me open the next hearing then, um, this is, uh, case number two, two thirty-three Winter Street, type of district, residence A2, type of structure existing, owner's name, Jose Faraz, uh, owner's address, two thirty-three Winter Street, when did you acquire this property, twenty nineteen? His application with town clerk, yes, has any previous appeal been made, no. Section of bylaw which relief is requested, section six, six dash six, accessory apartment, special permit, reason for asking relief, owner wishes to add an in-law apartment in the basement. This case was advertised in the Whitman Hansen Express on February fourth and February eleventh, and we had it originally scheduled for an earlier meeting, and of course, I don't have it handy what the date was, but the applicant, uh, was unable to be present, and so we continued it to tonight. So I do not recall if we, uh, read the list of abutters, but I'll note that there are no abutters present, so I'll, I'll entertain a motion to waive the reading of the list of abutters, just to make sure we did it.
Oh, move.
Move by Mr. Andrews, is there a second?
A second.
Second by, uh, Mr. Katchaturi, although actually, I'll, I'll put Mr. Keeman on, on this case, so, Mr. Keeman, would you like to make a?
I'll second.
Okay, uh, so, uh, so this, and sitting on the case will be myself, Mr. Andrews, Mr. Blas, Mr. Keeman, and Mr. Gilmetti, let me take a vote on, vote on the motion to waive the reading of the list of abutters, uh, Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmetti?
Yes.
Mr. Blas?
Yes.
Mr. Keeman?
Yes.
And myself, John Goldrosen. Okay, uh, Mr. Faraz, let me just, uh, I'm gonna try to get the plan up on the screen. Oh, there it is, it's up there already. Okay, this is the plan for two thirty-three Winter Street. So, Mr. Faraz, why don't you explain to us what you want to do?
Yes, um, this is the basement, so I'm trying to finish it off, I'm gonna add a, uh, I'm gonna add a, a bedroom, and a small kitchen. When my, when my mother comes, also have a place to stay.
Okay, uh, will there be a bathroom on that floor?
Yes, yes, yes. It's one, one, one bedroom, it's a, a living room and, and a bathroom and a, a small kitchen.
Okay, and what would the, um, entrances and exits be for, for that, uh, the basement unit?
You got a back, you back, uh, exit from the back of the house, and, and you're gonna use the, uh, the door coming up, coming up to, uh, to the hallway upstairs.
Okay, so you have just going to use the stairs from the first floor down to the basement?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and so you're not building, are you building any addition on to the?
No addition.
No addition. And uh and the existing house is uh single fam- I mean, single story, plus a basement, is that right?
Yes, single story, yes.
Okay, and how many how many bedrooms and rooms do you have on the first floor now?
On the first floor, you had one good bedroom and then two small bedrooms and living room and uh and a kitchen and and a bathroom.
Okay, alright, and it looks uh and I think the plan kind of indicates the contours here. So your your property kind of slopes down from Winter Street down to the back, and so that's why the the basement level opens on to the backyard, is that right?
Yes, correct.
Okay, alright.
I mean, I can put the window on the back, I can put the uh good sized window there to meet the egress. It's rise on the level the other ground.
Okay, yeah, I was going to add, Mr. Curran, uh is the building commissioner, any anything we need to be aware of in terms of building code requirements?
Um the code will require a a direct access to grades or door, and it will also require that we have emergency rescue opening for any bedroom, which means the window has to be forty-four inches or less off the floor in a clear opening of twenty by twenty-four in either direction. So that'll be part of my permitting pro- uh process. He may have to cut the foundation, put a larger window in.
Okay. And how many cars do you have a, let me let me enlarge this a little bit. Figured out how to do this.
I don't have it on my uh screen here.
Can you not, can can people see the uh?
All I have, all I have is a list of uh what we're doing tonight.
Oh, let me can other people, it, other people cannot see the uh?
File's not open, John.
Oh, okay, I I can see it. Let me try doing it this way.
You need to share it with us.
Yeah, yeah, let me uh. This is a close up of it. Uh can you see this?
No.
No. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna close. Let me start over on that piece of it. Alright, let me start over and see if I can pull this.
I've got a copy of the site plan here.
Yeah, yeah, but for uh let's see.
Where's Stephen?
He, I think he just stepped away.
He had to change.
Take whatever.
Okay, can people see this?
Yeah, it's fine.
Okay, so this is kind of the close up of the uh the house, here's Winter Street, there's the backyard. So, Mr. Faraz, this uh and I realize this is a plan from two thousand and one, I believe.
Two thousand and three.
Two thousand and three.
John, John, that addition, this this uh plot plan was drawn up to add that addition back in two thousand and three. The addition is built.
Okay.
Alright, so there's not, that that is actually now part of the existing.
So that's part of the house. Uh so, and you you don't have a garage there, right, Mr. Frost?
No.
Okay, how many cars fit in the driveway?
Two cars.
Okay. Alright. Alright, and then just the, you know, I just, I say this to everybody who applies for an in-law apartment, just to make sure they're aware of the rules that uh you can only use it for a family member. And you know, if that situation should change, you cannot use it as a second unit. You can't rent it out to somebody else.
Right.
You know, if if you sell the house to somebody else, they they have to come in and get permission from us to continue using it as an in-law apartment for that.
Okay.
Okay, let me uh read a couple of letters into the record from members of the uh from other town boards, and then we'll have questions from members of the board. From the uh Board of Health, uh Board has no objections to the requested relief from section six, six dash six to allow for proposed accessory apartment for the above property. This property has permission and is connected to the municipal water and sewer systems, uh very truly yours, Mary Kelly Clark. From the uh planning board at the January twelfth, twenty twenty-one meeting, the board reviewed the plan for two thirty-three Winter Street. The planning board has no recommendation at this time due to lack of information since the plan seemed to be out of date. Uh Adam Summerbell, Chairman. Okay, uh if people are okay, I'm gonna close, close out of this so we can see each other. So I can always reopen it if we need to. Alright, questions from uh members of the board, Mr. Keeman?
Yeah, are you going to extend the driveway, make the driveway bigger?
Mr. Frost?
No, I got a driveway there. I don't have even more. I got plenty driveway there.
Because the problem is you need three parking spaces in that driveway to accommodate it, and you only said you had two.
I mean, if I need to, I can do on the other side. Or I can extend that. I mean, I wasn't planning to do that, so.
Yeah, it certainly looks like you have room to uh expand the driveway.
Yes, I got plenty room there if I have to.
You just just wide, you 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 wouldn't have to put in a second driveway. You could just widen what you have. You could widen it, either widen the section by the street or the section further back to have three spaces or just one double, you know, double the size to have four.
Right, so I I think I got plenty room there to.
Yeah.
I got three cars easy.
Okay.
Room there on the driveway.
Alright. Um, anything else, Mr. Keeman?
That's all I have.
Okay, uh Mr. Blaws?
Um, just to comment, Mr. Chairman, the um the the work that's been done on the house um makes the i- i- is been done, uh appearance is is very, very nice. And uh and I want to just say, uh Mr. Faraz, you did a great job on it. Um, the, what he's done and what he's asking for, uh I think totally um fulfills what our zoning bylaw um or what our bylaw for in-laws is is asking. Uh you would never know that there's an in-law there. There's no visible second entrance. It looks like a single family home, and I really think that, I mean, I I think it's a great project, and what you've done is is good so long as everything is up to code with Mr. Curran. Um, uh I give you a thumbs up.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Andrews?
Well, I have a lot of problems with the site plan. But other than that, I have no problem where it's going to be totally enclosed within the cellar, is that correct?
Yes.
Completely within the cellar.
Excuse me?
This this in-law apartment is going to be totally in the bottom level, is that right?
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Alright, I have no problem with that, but I'm not happy with this site plan at all. It's 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 way out of date and it's lacking all kinds of what's required, but I have no problem with what you're going to do here. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. Mr. Gilmati?
Well said, John.
Alright.
It's fine, I'll I'll, Mr. Blaws says it all.
And I I agree uh that, you know, this totally meets the intent of the bylaw, that it's enclosed within the existing house. It's uh, you know, you're just you're just giving up your basement. Uh, and Mr. Andrews, I'd I'd say if if you were putting a, you know, if you were adding to the house, I I'd have an issue with.
Right, right.
But since this, there's actually no addition going on, that's that's why I I don't have a problem with the age of the plan, but I understand what you're saying.
Right, well, this is similar to the one on Victoria Drive. It's completely enclosed within the basement, so the.
Exactly, alright, uh we don't have any other abuddas here. Anything else anybody wishes to say? Otherwise, I think we can close the hearing and proceed to a vote on the request for a special permit. Do I hear a motion?
Oh, move, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Mr. Blaws. Is there a second?
I'll second my own motion.
Yes, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Seconded, John. Anyone seconded?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Mr. Andrews seconded. Alright, I'll take a vote. Uh, Mr. Keeman?
Yes.
Mr. Blaws?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmati?
Yes.
And myself, John Goldrosen, yes. That's five oh, and the uh request for the special permit is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frost. Good, good luck with it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and uh we'll, you'll be getting a copy of the decision in the mail in a couple of weeks and.
Alright.
And Mr. Curran, I'm sure I can talk to you about how to proceed.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Uh, thank you.
Okay.
John, do they still have to record that? The 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 decision, do they still have to record it?
Yes.
Sure.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, I think we're ready to proceed now to uh the next case. Uh so, Ms. Hughes, if you can hear me, you can, you can unmute yourself. We're ready, ready for you. Um, and we cannot see you, so if uh can you hear us, Ms. Hughes?
I can hear you guys perfectly. I can't get my video to work. I do not know why. I'm not that technology, I'm challenged with.
Can you see us?
Oh, yes, I can see, I can see everybody and I can hear everybody clearly.
If you look down, I mean, it's not, it's not critical that we can see you, so that's not so important, but if you look, if you move your cursor down to the bottom of the screen, uh there may be something that says, you know, video with a line through it, with a red line through it. And if you click on that, that would uh open up your video possibly. You you're getting advice at the moment from somebody who's not, not very much further advanced than you, so take it for what it's worth. But in any case, we can proceed. So this is uh case number four. Location of property, two seventy Washington Terrace, type of structure proposed. Owner's name, Victoria Hughes. Owner's address, two seventy Washington Terrace. When did you acquire this property? October nineteenth, twenty eighteen. His application been filed with town clerk, yes. Has any previous appeal been made? No. Section of bylaw which relief is requested, section six, six dash six. Accessory apartment special permit. Reason for asking relief? My parents are elderly and are struggling with health issues. Mom is legally blind and they are becoming in need of more assistance every day. This in-law suite will allow us to give them the increasing assistance they require. This case was advertised in the Whitman Hansen Express on February eighteenth and February twenty-fifth. And I believe we opened it uh on March March eighth, let me just check here.
Hi, can you guys hear me? You guys froze.
Okay, can you hear? We can hear.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Let's see, we opened the uh we opened the hearing, uh but um let's see, Ms. Hughes was unable to attend uh the hearing, so we continued it. We did read the list of abuddas that night. And I'll notice, I'll note that there are no abuddas present tonight. And I else, let's see. There were several abuddas present uh on March, on March eighth, but they are not here tonight, so maybe they heard enough, I don't know. And Mr. Taffetory, you asked to be excused that night because you knew one of the abuddas, the.
Okay.
That I I I is up to you.
Oh.
Yes, that's fine.
Oh, no, I um I had um, I actually was sick. I had COVID. So I had to reschedule.
Well, good.
I know, I I mean, it started in person, but I was sick, so I had, I wasn't doing, I wasn't doing very well.
That's fine, we 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 didn't have any problem with continuing it, so we knew you were ill. Alright, so sitting on the case then will be Mr. Keeman, Mr. Blaws, Mr. Gilmati, Mr. Andrews, and myself, John Goldrosen. As I said, we already read the list of abuddas, so let me then try to put the plan up. Give me a minute to let's see.
Nope.
Um, that's can people see that plan?
No.
No, alright, let me try again. It's like I'm, if I open more than one thing, I have trouble getting back to it.
You have six hundred and twenty-two items open. That's what it says in the corner.
Let's see. Yes, let's start over. I'm gonna close a bunch of things that might make it easier. Yeah, I'm gonna close everything I got open and start over. Let's see what I can do now. Believe it or not, I had everything all open already, so it'd be nice and easy, but somehow I can't reach them, so let's try this. Okay, can people see the application?
No.
That's the list of everything going on tonight. Same as the last case.
John, this is Ryan here. Does it, when you go to share your screen, does it give you options of what window to choose?
Well, I thought it, I had, let me, let me close again, yes.
It usually comes up with a list of all all the different views you can choose, and it gives you, if you have a a document open, it usually will give you that to the avail- availability to choose that particular document.
Well, what I just did was I tried to close documents to see if it's easier to reopen. Try this.
No, I see it opened up to your your um folder here.
If I can't open it, does everybody have the uh?
Yes, I have the site plan.
Alright.
Andy, I'll edit.
Make one, I'm gonna make one more stab and then I'm gonna uh can people see that?
That's the application.
Okay, alright, then I've got it attached here. First, first of all, here's uh
There you go.
It's just in the area, this is the house here, just so people can see it. Because I don't think the plan showed too much of the surrounding houses, so.
No, there was no, no locusts.
Yeah, so I added that, here's Washington, well, that Washington Terrace, which, you know, becomes a circle up here, here's Beulah. Okay, let me go to the, so here is the plan. I will uh blow it up a little bit. And and let me also, whoops. Okay. Okay, I'll I'll put it, here's, so there's the entire lot. Let me just quote, go in a little bit. Here's the existing house, here's a proposed addition, and here's Washington Terrace, and here's a neighboring house. Hi, uh, Ms. Hughes, do you want to explain to us what you want to do?
Um, yes, um my parents are getting a little bit older and they need a little bit more assistance, so I wanted to put an in-law onto um onto my home and I'm just, I mean, I'm I'm pretty close with most of my neighbors and I know, I I've spoken with numerous neighbors and basing time with that, so I put in for an application. And and now I'm here speaking with you guys.
Okay, so might just describe your existing house, uh how many stories it is, how many rooms it has. Okay, so might just describe your existing house, uh, how many stories it is, how many rooms are in it?
Um, it's, it's a one-level ranch. There are two bed, there are two bedrooms, and the basement is actually finished.
Okay.
And it's just one bathroom. It's a one-level ranch.
All right, and here, this is the proposed addition, so what would be in that?
So, um, basically, um, a one-bedroom, a, a, a small kitchen, um, a kitchen bath and a little, a small little living space.
All right, and this would be one story as well?
Yeah, it, it would basically, it would look like the house, it would look like a single-family home. That's basically what it, it's gonna be one level, it would look like a single-family home.
And you, I have a couple of architectural plans, I'll go to those in a second. Um, to use supply. So what would be the entrances and exits into the addition? It looks like they're being.
So I actually, I actually have my boyfriend with me, his um, Jeff Jernigan. Yeah, his son's the architect on it.
He's McKinnon and Associates, um, so the entryways would be off the existing.
I'm sorry, could you just repeat your name for the record, just so our secretary?
Sorry, my name is Jeff Jernigan. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
So the um, primary entryway would be um, off the existing, there'd be a small mudroom, and then there'd be a slider area, um, dumping out from the proposed in-law into the backyard.
Okay. All right, and um, how much parking do you have here? Looks like you got a driveway.
There's, yeah, there's at least one for at least five cars in there. I mean, Victoria's mother is legally blind, so she doesn't
Yeah.
drive well, no, at all. There'd be three cars in here, but there's one for five.
Yeah.
Okay, let me uh, if it's okay with you, I'm gonna go to you, your next pages that you submitted.
Sure.
And let's see.
The front elevation?
Yeah, let me try turning this, rotating this. Okay, and I'll pull it up a little bit here. All right, so this is the front, front elevation here. Okay, this is the right side.
From the right side.
Okay, and next, whoops, okay, I thought I had, I guess that's the only uh, okay. Um, so just looking at this, this would be sort of the mudroom entrance here.
Correct.
Okay. And so the house, the addition is sort of perpendicular to the uh, existing house.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Okay, um, the only thing I'll mention, so I don't forget, is we always like to remind applicants that, uh, for a accessory apartment special permit, that it's uh, it can only be used for a relative, that if that situation should change, you cannot use it as a second, as a rental unit. And uh, if you sell the house, the new owner has to come in and get permission if they want to use it as an in-law. I'm sorry, anything further you want to say at this moment?
No, I don't, I don't think so.
If you, if you folks need um, a more descriptive floor plan, I, I, I just didn't, I mean, I could submit a few guys if you need a floor plan outlining the utilities and whatnot, but um, but that's what I submitted, because I, I know that you, you guys are looking for, basically for the, the property to remain as, so it appears as though it's a single family, which I think we've accomplished here, but um, if you need any more documentation, I have it.
Okay, all right, let's see what the, what the board feels. Let me read a couple of letters into the record from the town boards, and then we'll have questions from the members of the board. From the Board of Health, the Whitman Board of Health has no objection to the petition of Victoria Hughes for a special permit for an accessory apartment for the property located at two seventy Washington Terrace. As the DPW billing records indicate, this building is connected to municipal sewer and water. Sincerely, Mary Kelly Clerk from the Planning Board. Uh, at the January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one meeting, the Planning Board reviewed the plan for two seventy Washington Terrace. The Planning Board recommends approval provided all aspects of six, six dash six are met. The Board also suggests that the Board of Appeals ask for clarification as to what section of six, six dash six the applicant is looking for approval for, Adam Somerville, Chairman. Mr. Cowan, am I missing, missing something other than a special permit for the accessory apartment?
No, it's a, it's a special permit in accordance with six dash six.
Okay, all right, all right, if people are up kind of considering the difficulty I had getting this open, I'm gonna leave it open for now, and uh, in case members of the board have comments on, or questions about the design. So let me go to members of the board for their comments and questions. Mr. Keeman?
Yeah, what's the dimensions of the existing house?
Oh, geez, you would ask for that, it's gotta be
Twenty-four forty-two.
Thousand and eight square feet. I'm sorry, the question was?
About a, about a thousand square feet or so, if it's twenty, I just.
The existing hot ones, yes.
Okay. And what would the addition be?
Seven hundred ninety-three.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Keeman, anything further?
My only concern was, is there any way to move that addition closer to the street? So it doesn't look like two separate buildings on that? With that little breezeway, the only thing that connects it?
I, I mean aesthetically, there's always, there's already a breezeway there, like a little porch area.
That was already existing.
And to move it forward, I think would encroach on the parking. And it's just, it, as it is now, it's only set back about maybe ten feet, so it looks like it's, it's just the piano step that that would be most appealing to the neighborhoods, that's why we designed it that way, but we certainly could, but it'd be difficult to, to create the connection between the two houses or the, 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 the existing house and the in-law, if we moved it too far forward.
Let me just, Mr. Keeman, I'm gonna move back to the uh, to the site plan here, just to So yeah, if it moves forward, it's, you've got the driveway right up to there. You, you suggested it like it can move forward to be even with the existing houses.
They would look more, more like a single-family house if that was done than it does in this picture.
Yeah, I think it's, you know, the if it was more like, like that, you know, and an addition like that, you wouldn't see the parts sticking back from the street anyway, but if it were, if it were built more like that, it would make it more of a.
Just it would create, it creates, um, like the, the floor plan of the in-law, if we move it forward, it creates more of a, an intrusion so that the, the houses become almost like the same spot, and it's not a separate spot for Victoria's parents. So that the entryway wouldn't, the entryway would be basically in their living room. And we wouldn't have a way, the only way, without, the only way Victoria and I would have access to the existing houses to come in through the in-law and then hang that left.
All right, let me go back to, to this one. So this is, this, this is already part of the, it's already there.
Correct, there's, well, the door's not, but there's a porch there. Correct.
Okay, so the door's like on the side here, so to get from the driveway, you go up here and you turn to your left and you go through.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Another reason we did that is so we would still have access to the, you know, an, an easy way to get to the backyard.
Okay, because you go out the back of this to get to the backyard. All right. So if this were pulled, if the addition were pulled forward towards the street.
We would have to enter the in-law to gain access to the existing, to Victoria's existing house.
Couldn't you have?
Awkward.
Just creates that intrusion to that, to their little private spot.
You couldn't have this be like have a door into the in-law and a door into your, into your house? Let this, you know, sort of, have doors on each side of it, so it's not part of either unit?
Well, the way it's set up now, that, the entryway, as you come in into the, that common door right there, yep.
Yep.
As you go through there, there's a door to the right that enters in the in-law, and there's a door to the left that exits, that enters into the existing structure. So to move, to move that forward would would require us to then go through Victoria's parents' in-law to enter Victoria's house without, I, I mean, ob- obviously we could use the front door, but it's, it's set back as it is to, to maintain the parking and to, to create an area where it's, it, it allows the in-law to, to kind of be a standalone spot for folks.
Okay. I mean, I certainly understand why you want to have access from the main house to the driveway. It doesn't, I, I'm sure you probably almost, probably almost never use your front door, I would expect.
No.
No, yeah.
But it just seemed like if, if this addition could come forward, just even if it was just even with the the uh, the mudroom, just would see right now, it's like, it's like a separate building that just has this little mudroom connecting the two buildings, and I think that's, that's what's a little troubling about it.
I, I, I'm, I'm just, is it aesthetically, just, are you guys, I mean, I've spoken with the neighbors and nobody thinks that it does, everyone's like, oh, it looks like a, a one-family, nobody has any issue.
I can say you guys, the, um, the entire set of plans, if that would satisfy the board. Um, but, and I think if you saw the way the in-law was set up, I, I think that um, you'd probably have a better idea as to why we designed it that way, so Victoria's mother could have access with a, a slider directly into the backyard. Um, where, where that little hand is, that's, the slider would ba- basically be right in that area. So it, it just allows for a just easier access. Um, I, I mean, as, as I said, if we move the entire, the, the entire um, project forward, it just creates more of an intrusion for, for their, their privacy, so we'd, we'd have to basically enter their, that new section.
Okay.
Uh, and, and also, it would also encroach on the parking area and whatnot, so that's but I mean, we, we would have.
I, I think the, the issue is the, the, the rule that it retain the appearance of a single-family house. And whether that.
Yeah, no, I, I understand that. We, we thought that it did, and the neighbors believed that it did. I, I, if you, if you fellows need more documentation, I could certainly um, provide that, um.
But let me, let me, however, let me see what other members of the board feel, and you know, we'll, we'll take it.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Keeman, anything else?
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Blaws?
Oh geez, thank you, Mr. Chairman. This uh, this has a, there, there's a lot, a lot to be said about this. I'm, I'm gonna read from the bylaws, and it says, the accessory apartment shall be designed so that the appearance of the structure remains that of a one-family dwelling, um, subject further to the following conditions. Yeah, well, and, and it also says that uh, yeah, I'm just trying to, yeah. Um, an accessory apartment is a, is a separate housekeeping unit, complete with its own means of egress, sleeping, cooking, and sanitary facilities that is substantially contained within the structure of a single-family dwelling, but functions as a separate unit. So we have a one thousand and eight square foot um, building now, or a house now. And we're looking at adding eight hundred square feet, so nearly doubling the, uh, the size of the dwelling. Well, that's certainly not, uh, doesn't follow the intent of our zoning, of our in-law um, bylaw. For all intent and purpose, that's a two-family. Um, is really what it is, but it's, but it's uh, attached with a breezeway, so um, it, it's, it's, um, it's an in-law, or so we uh, uh, that being said, I understand that uh, and Bob, you've, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but you've explained it to us. They have the right to build the addition. And once the addition's built, uh, just not put a kitchen in, but once the building's uh, built or the addition is completed, they can come back and ask for a in-law because it would be completely contained within the uh, existing dwelling. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, you know, I guess we'll call it technicalities. Um, from the street with the addition, we're looking at sixty-two feet wide and sixty-four feet deep. Um, that's nearly the, uh, the appearance of nearly thirty-six hundred square feet of footprint, even though I realize in the back it's open. Um, but it looks like a, this is a, it, it's gonna look huge, if you're looking at the westerly side, if you're on the street on Washington Terrace, and on, you're on the westerly side of your house, today it looks like it's sixty by sixty, or sixty-two by sixty-four. So that's really, really large. Um, that being said, what you're proposing in the, uh, I appreciate seeing the, the elevated drawings. It is, um, it is pretty nice, and it is a pretty good-sized lot. And when I, uh, when I look at the, the Google Maps for the, yeah, the Google Earth, I guess it is, and I, you know, I look at how much room you have there. It seems like you could put that, um, that addition in without really um, making too intense um, uh, you know, the use of the lot, I guess. Uh, but I have a question for the chairman. Um, John, this is A two zoned. The lot is seventeen thousand, three hundred seventeen square feet, and A two requires eighteen thousand. So do we need to make a determination or something there?
Yeah, I, I think, uh, I think you're right. You would need a, uh, besides a special permit, it also needs a determination.
Um, I don't agree that it would. I think that as long as the addition meets the setbacks and is under the total maximum coverage, lot coverage, it should be fine.
But isn't it, if, if this were, if they were just putting an addition on that wasn't for an accessory apartment, wouldn't they need a determination because the lot is undersized and they're expanding the size of the house?
Generally speaking, if a lot is undersized and they can put an addition on that meets the setbacks required, they do not go to the Board of Appeals.
Okay. All right.
Okay, so I, I, I guess I'm saying where I'm a little bit twisted between here.
Well, so, so they, they don't have, they don't even get close to the maximum lot coverage.
Yeah.
Which if you look in six, six dash five, um, I'll look it right up now.
Yeah, six X, that's five.
In A two is twenty-five percent, so they're, they're still under twenty-five percent, they're okay. Uh, and just so this entire Board of Appeals knows that if, if somebody has a sixteen thousand square foot lot and the requirement is twenty-two thousand, five hundred, and they want to add a mudroom on, um, and they I don't send them to the Board of Appeals. You guys would be inundated with cases, you'd be here in six a week. Uh, because the majority of lots in this town are, are probably considered undersized.
Okay.
And, um, yeah, it, so that being said, I, I'll simply say, I, I would prefer the um, the proposed addition be set back as it is in the drawings rather than move it forward. Because it just, I, I just think it lays out nicer. But uh, I'd like to hear what everybody else has to say, but. But, uh, I'd like to hear what everybody else has to say, but generally speaking, um, I'm okay with it.
Okay. All right, let me go on, um, Mr. Andrews.
Uh, Mr. Blaws is 100% correct. This doesn't in any way meet the guidelines of the in-law apartment bylaw. It's, uh, it's only connected by a little tiny corner of the house. It also violates the, uh, the regular bylaw stating that you can have, not have two, two, uh, primary buildings on the same lot. There again, it's connected by just a little tiny area which is attempting to get around the intent of both those things. And you know, you've got the measurement of the original house that's 42 by 24, and the addition is, uh, uh, 40 by 20. You know, you're in effect making a separate dwelling, and you're just connecting it to get around the bylaw. And I think this, uh, should not be allowed to, uh, go forward.
If, if I may, gentlemen, uh, it, it was in no attempt to get, I, I wasn't even aware of that bylaw, um, during the, the, uh, design of this property. We, we designed it so it would benefit Victoria's parents and not in, in any effort to get around a bylaw of any type, so I, I would just, well, that, that's all.
And having, having that second, having that second entrance on the front is going to give the appearance of a two-family. The entrances are supposed to be on the side or the rear, not on the front. I, I just, uh, I'm not in favor of this at all.
Yeah, I just, I, we're not accusing you of doing something underhand, I, I think just the outcome, you know.
Okay, so no, I just wanted to just make this, just clarify that, that we, I, I wasn't even aware of that bylaw, I just, I mean, the, the design was such that, um, just to, to make it aesthetically pleasing to the neighbors, which we've spoken to all of them, it, it is. Um, they're all on board, and, uh, just to make it as, as comfortable as possible for Victoria's parents as they get older. So, um, but as far as, I mean, we, I had no idea of that, um, that, that the bylaw, the, the language there, so.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Gometti? Fred, are you there, Mr. Gometti? He's still.
He's gone.
Well, he's still on the screen.
Not on my screen. No, maybe I'm.
All right, well, let me proceed. So echo some of what's been said, I mean, I, um, you know, we, we, I think the thing that troubles me most is, if this were, if this were like smack, I'm not saying that'd be the best design, but if this were like this, you know, the same size, the size alone one troubled me, because people, as Mr. Curran has said, people can put additions on to single-family houses. I'm more troubled by the way it's just kind of, you know, connected at a corner, that, that's what's troubling me, and I, so I, 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 if people, okay, I'm going to close this, so I can see everybody. So I, I mean, I, I think there's a couple ways we can go. First of all, the, the applicant is, i- if I saw the floor plans, it might, yeah, it might help me understand what obstacles there are that, you know, made this necessary, or maybe if we had the floor plans, we'd say, well, why don't you, you know, do this or that to it? So we could continue it and let them submit those plans, or, you know, if, uh, the board really feels like they should come up with something different, I'm, I'm okay with that, yeah, but I'd be, I'd be, we, we have another meeting scheduled for April 12th, just, um, a couple of weeks away. I, I'd be okay with continuing it, let them supply that additional material and, and look at it in, in that light. How do the other members feel about that? Mr. Keeman? Mr. Keeman?
Yeah.
Uh, just, what, what do you think we should do at this point?
I'm not, I don't disagree with it, I just thought it would look better. But, um, if they can come up with a little bit better plan to make it look more like a single-family, we should continue it. I also agree that they could put that addition on, and then after the fact, so I don't have a problem that way. But it just doesn't look like a single-family house to me.
Yeah. Okay, uh, Mr. Blaws?
Um, I don't know that, what, uh, seeing what, seeing the plans, I don't know what that would, uh, the floor plan, uh, I don't know what that would accomplish. You've got 800 square foot of addition where you've got a bedroom, living room, kitchen, and bathroom, so, um, I think we should, uh, move forward with the plans submitted and vote on it.
Andrews?
Well, unless the size of the addition is greatly reduced and, uh, appears to be more inside the existing structure, that's, uh, I'm, I'm not looking favorably on it.
And I'll say, I mean, I don't, and I know we've had this discussion, I don't agree, Mr. Andrews, that it needs to be within the existing structure, but it needs to look, to me, it needs to look like a single-family.
Well, the, the size of the addition makes it look like a two-family.
Yeah, and, and so I think, you know, I'd say to the applicant, I think the issues I'm hearing are, number one, the overall size of the addition compared to the existing house, and secondly, its placement. I, I'd like, so I'd like to, it, it seems to me there should be something solvable here, though, given the size of the lot and so forth, and so I, I'd, I'd like to continue it and give the applicant, for it's the opportunity to submit those additional plans, because if I, if I saw the floor plans, it would help me understand better the placement of the entrance to it, and whether there's some other alternative that, uh, I'd allow the two buildings to be, you know, put together, have more of a connection between the, uh, the addition and the existing structure, or, or I'd understand better why, you know, what the obstacles are. And the other purpose of continuing it would be to give the applicant a chance to, to think if they want to try to come up with something that addresses the concerns of the board. My other reason for continuing is we just, one of our board members dropped off the screen, and, uh, so I'd like to have Fred here, too, before we would, we would take any, any. Sorry, we're, we're, we couldn't hear you, that all got blurred, there's some buffering issue. Not very well. Are you, are you speaking, are you right there with, with Mr.?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
There's like an echo to it when you speak, and so we can't make out. Tell you what, why don't you do this? Down at the bottom of this, can you see down at the bottom of the screen, uh, where it says "more", and there is a chat, an option for chat?
Yeah, yeah.
Why don't you click on that and type in what you're trying to say? And then will we, or if I'm the only one who can see that, I can feed it out to people? Let's try doing that. So can you type in, uh, something for chat? There we go. Can everybody see the chat comment? If not, I can read it.
No, I didn't see it.
Okay. One of the board members drove by a few days ago and saw the house in person up front. I, I know I drove by, so I, yeah, I am familiar with what it looks like, and I certainly agree that, you know, the law.
That was me, John, and I talked, I talked to the fellas, I was in my car and I just talked to them for a minute.
Okay.
And I just told them I was looking at the properties.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Sponsors, okay. So I'll, I'll say this to the applicant, do, do you want us to continue this hearing? April 12th, and, um, if you can, uh, send, or, to, to make sure we can actually see it, I, uh, Mr. Curran, could I ask him to give you any further drawings, and you make a PD out of it and send it to me, would, could you do that?
Yeah, I, and just so the applicant hears it, um, I will make myself available if they want to try to schedule an appointment with me at Town Hall, we'll go over this. Um, I can let him into the lower meeting room, just one-on-one. Um, and I'd be happy to help them, because I know where this board is coming from. Also, John, um, there was two notes on this, um, paper that my secretary had taken phone calls from neighbors, one of them was Marion Bishop and Rudy Bishop.
Okay.
And, and they are across the street neighbors, and they are in favor and they support their neighbor's request for variance, but would not be able to make the hearing. And then there was another note, and again, these are phone messages to my secretary. Then there was another one from Kathy Perazzo, uh, from 260 Washington Terrace. She supports her neighbor's request to the ZBA for an in-law, and that came in on, um, March 2nd, 2021. So the neighbors have been calling with support. Um, I will help whatever way I can, I'll make myself available. Um, just in case, Victoria, you can hear me, um, the morning is a good time for me, and I can put aside some time to meet with you.
And the chat, first they asked if they could reboot the audio, but I think the problem's at your end, uh, Hughes. Um, and they said we can in response to Mr.
Okay, so they just called me at the Building Department tomorrow morning, we'll come, come, come up with a time. It looks like, uh, Tuesday and Wednesday are going to be tough, but Thursday I'm available, uh, between 7:30 and 9:00.
And they said, uh, Robert, that would be great.
Okay.
So.
And I know what this board is looking for, you're looking for more of an attachment to the existing house.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll coach the best I can.
And, and some consideration to whether the, at least from my point of view, whether the addition could be somewhat smaller. But it is for, it is for two people, is that, uh, correct? Uh, Hughes, it said, you know, it's for both your parents, so.
Yeah, and, and the other thing this board needs to remember is the continuity between my office and the public in Whitman has been down for over a year. Um, generally, these applications come to my office and I help them with them. And the last, uh, four or five plans, it was the first I saw, was the application gets submitted. So, um, I will coach them the best I can.
Okay, all right. I was going to say, yeah, it, you know, the thing is, if the house were 2,000 square feet and they were putting an 800-foot addition on, it's like, well, that wouldn't be so out of proportion, but it's a modest house right now. And so for two people, like, I guess I'm, I don't have that much of a problem with the 800 square feet myself, if, if it can look more like a continuation of the existing house.
What do you, I mean, what do you do with the property in three years, five years, 10 years, when your parents age out? And you're sitting with a, uh, a house that's twice the size of what you need? You can't rent it. It just.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Andrews. Go ahead, Mr. Andrews, go ahead.
Uh, Bob, uh, maybe they could push the addition behind the house somewhat, and then make it smaller at the same time. It did, it's just, it just, you know, the size of it, it is just astronomical compared to the original house, and it, it's, it, it, it doesn't even attempt to meet.
Maybe I can show.
And I, I understand, I understand that, because, because most of these, uh, the surveyors and, uh, a lot of the, uh, people that doing the projects don't bother to take out a copy of our zoning bylaws to look at, or this, this wouldn't happen all the time.
Well, you know, it's, it's expensive to raise roofs, and if you put the house, put the addition right behind and attached, then you're tearing off roofs to, uh, to join them, and that's, that gets really expensive.
And again, this, I can look at it, but that might blur.
But some, sometimes it's just not feasible to do an in-law.
Yeah, I, I understood.
Always do one, you know?
I'll just read a couple more of the, the comments from the applicant in the chat. Um, yeah, yes, both my parents would be living there, and another extended family member could move in if that situation changed. And then, uh, in response to the question about, you know, raising roof and all, $2 signs. So, all right, my, my suggestion is we continue it to April 12th, and if it turns out that you need further time, uh, you know, because you don't have, you decide to revise the plans and you don't have time to do it, we'll just continue it again, that's not a problem. Uh, but at this point, I'm not sure what our meeting schedule is going to be, um, thereafter, so, uh, but I know we're meeting on April 12th. Carol, we have a, uh, one hearing scheduled at 7 o'clock on April 12th, right?
Yes.
Okay, so, uh, I'm going to entertain a, a motion, and it looks like, is Fred back with us? Let me just, uh, I see him on the attendees list, let me. Here, get Fred back in there. Fred, can you hear us? You're muted at this point. Fred, if you can, uh, hear us, Fred, can you hear us okay? I think you're, you, can you speak?
This is Dawn, can you hear me?
Yes, hi, Dawn.
Okay, here's Fred.
Yeah. Where did I leave off, John?
Oh, it just.
When did I get cut off?
Uh, we, we've had further discussion on it, and, you know, some of the board members have some concerns with this. So I've proposed continuing this until April 12th. In the meantime, the applicants, uh, are going to sit down with Bob Curran, and, you know, he'll take a look at the plan and, you know, help them understand and, and, and see if there's some modifications they can make to make it look more like a single-family house, basically. Uh, did you want to add anything, Fred?
Well, the thing is, that floor, the floor plan on that particular house, on all the houses, probably in Whitman, the, uh, entrance to the kitchen is right there. And, uh, that's the only entrance they could go into the house, uh, I don't know how else, I think they did it perfectly. And what, the appearance it gives me, it looks like it's a house with a breezeway, with a garage that was converted into an addition. So, I mean, I don't see the problem with it.
Okay. All right, well, um, and chat says, thank you. Let's, uh, let's continue, I, I'm going to propose we continue it to April 12th, let the applicant meet with Bob Curran, and we'll, we'll get back together then and, and, and see, and, uh, the other.
That's the only way they can design that, with that, with that means of egress.
Uh, the other reason I wanted to continue it, Mr. Gometti, was the applicant had offered to give the floor plans to the addition, that would help me understand better, you know, if it has to be this way, why it has to be this way, so I, I think we just have a little information.
There are many, many houses in Whitman, as I told, I was trying to say, uh, have breezeways and garage additions into a, a family room or a, uh, bedroom, or some kind of an addition. That's all.
Okay. All right, uh, and the applicant says there is no other way without redesigning the entire floor plan. So let's, I, I would just like to have the opportunity to, you know, for them to meet with Mr. Curran and for me to see. So let's, I, I would just like to have the opportunity to, you know, for them to meet with Mr. Curran and for me to see. Any additional information, I'd rather have that before I took any vote on this, so. So can I have a, can I just, I think we're clearing it. And also, Mr. Gometti, Mr. Curran offered to meet with them and, you know, they would like to do that, so let's go ahead and let that happen. So can I have a motion to continue this hearing until Monday, April 12th at 7:30?
I'll make the motion, John.
All right, is there a second?
A second.
Second, Mr. Keeman, I'll take a vote on it, Mr. Keeman?
Yes.
Mr. Blaws?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Gometti?
Yes.
And myself, John Goldrosen, yes, so just so the applicant and everybody knows, so for the. We already have another registration link on the town website for the next meeting. So you'll need to use that one, you know, this Zoom link won't work for the meeting on April 12th, so. Just go in, re-register, get the. And you'll be able to connect back with us at 7:30 on April 12th. All right, thank you very much, thanks for bearing with us in our technical difficulties, I'll be. So glad when we can meet in person. The applicant says, thank you to everyone for taking your time to speak with us, Mr. Curran and I will be in touch, so. All right, this case.
Mr. Jim?
Yes, Mr. Andrews.
I just have one bit of information. I've, I've been appointed to fill out a vacancy term on the planning board till the next election. And then I filed papers to run for that position in the, in the town election, but today. The planning board received two different things from, I assume it's the. The bylaw study committee, do we still have that in existence? One of, what they're doing is they want to put on the town meeting, the planning board is having a public hearing. They're revamping the. The wetlands, not the wetlands, what are they called? The what?
Floodplain.
The floodplain, they're, they're revamping the floodplain law, and I get the impression that every town is going to have to do it. And I summed through it, and they've done a very good job and they've added two more sections to it. My only comment is, in all the years on the board, I don't think we've ever had a case come before us for the floodplain, except for the adult store they want to put in years ago. And then today, I also received a packet from whatever organization did it, and they're rewriting the whole zoning bylaw. And there's parts of it that I think are not as good as they should be. In our book where it has the list of all the different things and it has to the right of it, whether it's permitted or not permitted and this and that. They're taking each item individually and putting all the things in front of it, anyway. There's gonna be a public hearing on those two on Tuesday. January, the second, the, the third Tuesday of, let's see, the third Tuesday of April.
So that would be the 20th.
The 20th, right, the planning board has their regular meetings on the second and fourth Tuesday, but this is in between. Public meeting that the planning board will have for those, and then they're gonna recommend them, you know, back to the selectmen so they can get them on the May town. Town meeting.
What, what time is the meeting, Mr. Andrews?
At seven o'clock, it's on a Tuesday. But I didn't know, I thought we had a member of this board that was a member of this bylaws study committee.
I'm not. If I am, nobody told me.
I don't know, what, maybe Jim Chandler was appointed, I, I don't know.
I think Jim was, yeah.
I, I will say on the, I don't want to talk too much on this because, you know, it wasn't on the agenda, I'll just. On the floodplain bylaw, that was actually supposed to go before town meeting a year ago. It's, we, we have to update it to meet federal requirements, and then as a result of the pandemic. The, the FEMA, the feds, sort of gave everybody grace to, to wait a year to do it. So that's been sort of waiting to be.
Right, well, I, I'd read through the, I'd read it, it's about five, six pages. Done a great job, and they've, they've added two more sections that weren't there before, and I think they've done a great job on that. The other one I just received today and I haven't, you know, it's the whole zoning bylaw. And I don't know who, who's doing it, but they left out the part where you talk about variances and special permits.
All right, I'll, I'll see what I can do to get a copy and.
Well, just call, just call Lincoln, Lincoln Heineman.
I wasn't aware of that, I remember seeing several years ago. There was like a, a red line done, proposed that.
Well, that's what this is, the red line.
Yeah, it was like, I think the Old Colony Planning Council worked on it, but I haven't heard anything on that since that time, several years ago, so.
Well, I didn't know if anybody here might be interested in going on, on the website, you know, that night.
Zoom meeting, Mr. Andrews.
Yeah, but I mean, we're having, we, we had a meeting just before this at five o'clock to vote, to put it. Have the public hearing, and the public hearing is gonna be the 20th of April.
A Zoom public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I assume it's gonna be a public hearing, yes, it is.
All right, we have some minutes to do, let's try to wrap this up so we can get out of here, thanks to everybody for your indulgence tonight with. Several cases and. Hopefully it won't be too long before we're back in Town Hall, that's all, and again, I don't want to go in, I did have a conversation, the, I will say the. New town administrator gave me a call, reached out to me, he's reached out to all the boards to introduce himself and. To ask, you know, I, I did tell them our feelings about the Zoom meetings and. That if soon as we could get back to Town Hall, that's what we would prefer. So he's aware of that and he, he would like, once, once we have an in-person meeting, he'd like to come and introduce himself to, to the board as well. Okay, I have the minutes from the. March 8th meeting, first of all, the minutes for case number 37, Victoria Drive. So the ones on this case were myself, Mr. Gometti, Mr. Andrews, Mr. Blaws and Mr. Keeman. If I have a, a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Mr. Andrews, is there a second? Second by Mr. Keeman, I'll take the roll call, Mr. Keeman?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Blaw, Mr. Blaws?
Yes.
Gometti, Fred, you're muted again. I'll, I'll vote yes, we'll leave, leave Fred's off of that.
John, do you get mine?
Can you vote to approve the minutes? I, I hear you now.
I abstained on that one.
Okay. Gometti abstains. Then the minutes for case number four, which is 270 Washington Terrace, that we just. This is when we just opened and continued the, the meeting, so same five people were on this one.
Moved to approve.
Moved to approve by Mr. Blaws, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Andrews, Mr. Keeman?
Yes.
Mr. Blaws?
Yes.
Andrews?
Yes.
Mr. Gometti?
Yes.
And myself, John Goldrosen, yes, and. Finally, the general minutes for March 8th. Everybody was here for that one, can I hear a motion on that?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Keeman, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Blaws, Mr. Cacciatore, I'll let you vote on these general minutes, because you were there. Yes, Mr. Keeman?
Yes.
Mr. Blaws?
Yes.
Andrews? Mr. Gometti?
Yes.
And.
I lose you again?
They'll give us five, so I'll, I'll abstain, so we have five voting, so it's a five oh vote, so. Okay, that is, that's it, we, we've got one new case at, on April 12th at seven, and we'll have the. Continuation of 270 Washington Terrace.
Yeah, Freddy's gonna be there, correct, the next one?
You want me there?
Yes. I like it, I like your voice.
Oh, we need you because you're, you're. Washington, so. Okay, anything else? If not.
What time is 270 Washington Terrace, continue to, John?
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty, thank you.
Yeah. Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cacciatore, I'll take the roll call and moving to adjourn, Mr. Cacciatore?
Ah, yes.
Mr. Keeman?
Yes.
Mr. Gometti?
Yes.
Blaws?
Yes.
And Mr. Andrews.
I'll abstain so you can vote.
I vote yes, all right, the meeting is adjourned, thank you all, thank you, Carol.
Good night, Carol.
Bye.
Carol.
Say goodnight, Carol.